So, Terry got his, you know, and I talked to Terry about, come on, let's get your funding this year. I'm doing a project of mine, and so...
You shouldn't be here, should you?
So we hope, we hope that's it. And somebody's brother is gonna do, put up a YouTube channel for money. And so, I like him, and so I said, see if you can do one couple for me. And he knows, and he's a basketball person, so it's fine. So, gonna get together with him next weekend. He sent me a list of questions, and, yeah, so, so that looks something.
So we can go ahead and do that? Okay, I'd like to invite you to join us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Greg?
Yes.
Okay. Our first duty of the morning is to approve the minutes of the February 6th meeting. One second. Okay, I have a motion and a second to approve the February 6th minutes. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Okay, our next item of business is the payment of the bills, the claims.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to pay all claims as presented on the agenda.
One more second. I have a motion and a second to approve all claims as presented on the agenda. All in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
If I may, I would like to suggest that the commissioners take up the notice, the hearing on the proposed lease between Carroll County and Indiana Building Corporation in Carroll County, Indiana at this time.
Okay.
It was, notice was published in the Carroll County comments, commence at 9:00 AM, and rather than move it to the end of the agenda, I would suggest that the board take it up now.
Okay.
The notice, as the notice calls for, it's a hearing on the proposed lease that the board has already approved the form at its previous meeting.
Uh-huh.
And that has also been, I believe, approved by the council, right?
Yes.
Yes, the council has also approved the form of the lease. And the purpose of this hearing is to determine if there are any taxpayers that wish to address the board on the proposed lease between the county and the building corporation at this time, so it's the public's opportunity to speak on the lease. So that is, and the lease is for a term of up to 27 years, commencing on the date that bonds will be issued by the building corporation for an annual rental lease amount which is not to exceed $1,000, $1,075,000. So these are maximum terms, but they cannot exceed those terms. And the actual amounts would be determined by the sale of the bonds, what the bond is sold for, so everyone. The purpose is today again is to hear any public comment, taxpayer's comment on the proposed lease. Not on the project, but on the lease.
All right. Is there anyone out here who would like to speak concerning the lease? Yeah, go ahead.
I guess my question is based off of the council meeting.
Off of what?
Off of the council meeting last week.
Okay.
Currently, based on invoices, and the project is all, already over half a million over budget. But earlier, doesn't what we're doing with the building corp. Take away from everyone knowing that ultimately, although not the intent, but ultimately, if you can't make the payment, then property tax comes into play. I know a gentleman said that it was not the intent, but ultimately...
Mr. Chairman, Dustin Meeks, Marge in Thornburg.
Okay. So there, there is no property tax pledged to these bonds? Property tax is not available for these bonds? And a completely different, or a whole additional approval process would have been required for property tax to be available for these bonds?
So what happens, if the county cannot make the payment based on the income tax currently assessed? What happens?
If the county was unable to make its payment on the bond, then that would be an event of default. But the, this financing is structured such that the county's jail lip more than covers the annual lease rentals during the entirety of the lease. And additionally pledged are the certified shares local income tax above and beyond the jail lip. So there are two approved local income tax revenue sources, which combined provide like more than 250% coverage on the anticipated debt service over the life of the bonds based upon paid utilities modeling. And the only way that that would change would be if you had some catastrophic shift in the bond market, which is not anticipated. That's why we build in quite exceptional coverage when you're pledging revenue sources. I mean, the, the kind of, these bonds, right, are not of the size and scale generally that are being sort of widely marketed. So most of, most of the time, the entities that are purchasing these bonds are large financial institutions, right, and they have very high demands for the coverage that goes into issuing these obligations. And I can assure you, there is no way, no way that property taxes will ever be used to pay these obligations during their entire life, and that the utility has very carefully structured them so that there is exceptional coverage for the debt service.
I believe at the last meeting, you used the word intent, right?
What I'm saying is, what I've said at the last meeting is that you could structure one of these deals such that they were property tax backed. Other counties do. Carroll County is not backing this financing of property taxes to authorize an issuance of, so to do a project of this size with property taxes, there's a separate process called judicial remonstrance that we would have had to gone through because the state statutes require additional protection of taxpayers when property taxes are the source of income that's being used for a project. Here, the commissioners have decided that this project would be financed exclusively with local income tax, which has a couple of advantages, including a longer time horizon on the bonds, that's why this lease can go out to 27 years if you're using property taxes at all. If property taxes could possibly ever be used, the lease can only go out 20 years. Here it's going out 27 years because it's only local income tax. I guess, I apologize at the last meeting that I wasn't clear, but in this, in this financing, there is no property tax involved. It is just legally possible, other counties have used property tax for similar projects. The commissioner, I don't, I try not to be in the habit of ever speaking in...
It's big, it's a big number.
In place of the commissioners. It is, it is legally possible, that is not the path the commissioners have decided to pursue.
All right, now back to the commissioners. So he is sad that there's gonna be no property tax, but as I understand it, this is merely for the construction of the project? That doesn't, it's not taking into account the expenses to put it in service, correct?
Basically, that's what she's saying, but we're not got that, we're not... She's asking that if, to get it up and running, furnished and everything, it's gonna cost more than what the actual building is, the construction costs, is that right? Or is that right?
Well, my thinking is we're bonding the structure, the construction of the building. How bad are we gonna pay for everything on the inside that it takes to actually flip the switch and turn it on? Where are we gonna get payroll, equipment?
Well, all that's pretty much...
Uniforms.
The way I'm understanding it is, it's already in place right now. They're just gonna go from one building to another building. So, but the issues they have at this old building, that extra money we're paying, I think the budget's pretty much gonna stay the same. I can say it's 100%, but I think we already got enough jail staff, 'cause you're gonna have more, you might have to hire one maybe, just 'cause you need rotation. With the new technologies gonna be put in this jail, it's gonna be easier to run.
But I would come back at you, Steve, with, we're not good at maintaining technology or structures. You know, we bought all that 911 equipment, and...
You know, that, that equipment only lasts five years, you know that, right?
Well, right, but we still have to upgrade it. You still can't have technology upgrades, so they're not gonna be free.
All right, that, you would have that expense no matter what, with the new jail or not.
Right, I mean, the day you open it, it's out of date, so going down the road, you still have to plan, you have time, money for that.
Right, I agree. And I think our council has done an honorable job so far, so we have to put faith in our councils to make sure they manage our money.
Well, then, how did we end up getting $600,000 over budget without a shovel being turned?
I don't, I haven't heard of that yet.
Yeah, I think we're getting the law from the purpose of this hearing.
Well, I think that's important, you agree that if we're already over budget?
I don't understand.
She's, she's saying we're already over budget, I guess there's a bill that we have to pay, it's like $500,000.
The rent tax bill.
Yeah, for the redesign.
It's $450,000.
What we're looking at though, the way I understand it here, according to the two gentlemen over here, we're just looking at the form of the lease. That's what we're discussing, the lease. And I just, I wanna know if there's anyone out here that has a comment about the lease itself, as far as 27 years, $1,075,000 a year, anything like that, if they would like to comment on your... Yes?
So, this is based on the local income tax. Can you tell me the effect of our local income tax? Does this, the dollars, the cents, the percentage of difference that our local income tax is increasing for Carroll County residents?
There, there won't be, there won't be any increase. The, so, the county previously adopted an income tax rate for jail and rehabilitation facilities in the county, that rate exists.
That's two or three years ago.
Yes, it's, yeah, it's in place, and there won't be any increase in it.
So that part, that rate is to count.
And the same thing with the certified shares, which is also pledged, there will be no change to the certified shares income tax rates. There won't be any change to the tax rate involved in the financing. Those revenue streams are there, and they, they're sized already to support the project.
Even though the project, a dollar don't run out?
Yeah, yes. The play, the play in the structure, in terms of, like, when the financial advisor is looking at what variables can be adjusted to make the financing work, the sort of size of the amount of income tax is not one of those variables that they can change.
Anyone else? Yes?
How much are you bonding for? What, what is the bond amount?
Not to exceed $17 million.
And so, then I'm wondering, what happened to that $24 million, something else, cost that was presented to you, and I think you approved it? Where's that money coming from, the difference?
That's a question.
Did you receive that copy of, I tried to give that reservation? And that backup at the exhibit where the money was coming, I don't know, I can get that?
Oh, so there's a plan?
Yes.
I maybe didn't read it, I don't know for sure, yeah. Well, and it could be, it could be, yeah.
Yeah, so I'll, I'll give it to you.
Okay, so there is a plan, and I, okay.
I have a question.
Please do.
What actually will the building corp do? Individuals on the building corp, what purpose do they serve?
What purpose do they serve? They will own the building, and we will lease it from them until 27 years or the end of the bond. And then it will be needed back over to us. You know, you can, you can get a refrigerator on the same deal now. You can lease a refrigerator, and it's...
This big refrigerator?
Yeah, you can, you can make the last lease payment, and you get, you get the refrigerator in your, yeah.
And I promise this is the last one. When will we actually see a picture of this structure?
What?
When will we actually see a picture of the, of this structure?
I didn't hear it yet. What, when will the last...
To my knowledge, the public hasn't seen it.
Oh, yeah, it's been shown several times during the meeting.
What are we looking for?
I know it wasn't the last one, it's not there.
Picture of this facility?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sure, I don't know.
Isn't there something in a book form, you know, one of those large, large kind of books, but something that...
A lot of times they post it like in the, what I'm saying, the rotunda, so people can actually see it.
We can, well, I guess this is an interment.
Well, maybe not just me, I mean, I appreciate you getting one, but I guess I just, you know, they're never gonna convince me we need it, but it seems to me it ought to be in the rotunda where people could come in and look at it before we do all this. I mean, you're gonna do whatever, whatever you're gonna do, but it is not then...
All these things that are public are available for anybody to come in and see. If you come in and you say, I would like to see the plant, we'll come up with it.
Right, but they're not just available for someone to walk in between 8:00 and 9:00.
We don't have an hour in here, so...
Right. It's a big, it's a big price tag for no picture in the rotunda, in my opinion. Do whatever you're gonna do, 'cause you're gonna do it. But, you know, is there space for a drug rehab? Is there any space, and what is it? You know, we're getting off topic, but you're putting people in the position to get off topic, 'cause this is the only chance we're gonna have to save, this probably isn't the last thing to do. We went from 11 to what will be over 30.
I'm sorry, Lisa, but I have trouble understanding.
She's worried about the rehab center, there could be room inside the rehab center in the, you know, the facility, which I think the sheriff said last, he's gonna try to get that implemented back in because we ran out of space for where it was at. We couldn't hold the meetings for the ones that's incarcerated. I got faith in our courts that will send people to rehab. I believe in this, if you want rehab, you're gonna do it, not if you're continuing to use it, it's personal choice, so that's...
Yeah, y'all are gonna do what you're gonna do.
We have to go with this. Go ahead.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, you can entertain a motion to adjourn the hearing. Okay, and take up your regular business. Okay.
I have a motion to adjourn the...
Lisa, do you second? So you've got a motion and a second to adjourn the hea, the hearing and take up the regular business? All in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And I apologize that I can't hear well enough today, sometimes I'm pretty stupid in my response because I opened up the question over there. County Highway, we're ready for you.
All right.
Good morning.
Good morning. We have, well, it's on the agenda, I talked about that the last time, but we have a couple things that we need to bring up. In our shop, we have a wiring issue. We use welders and stuff, and like them, I guess, they, some of the guys got up in there and started this placing together, and several times, I mean, over the years, and spots were a little bit together, so we gotta quote fix that. We have, I think we're trying to transfer some money, and I think we can, we can do it ourselves as far as paying for it. We had an estimate from the climate tech, we called two or three different places, we're the only ones that got back ones. You know, can't take my glasses off to see.
You're good.
So, to fix that, you seem to make some on the right one there. It came to $8,347.
Didn't you say you can come up with money within your own budget?
Hmm. And then our generator is, I think it's the one we got from here before they got the one that we have now, but nobody seems to know how to program it. And they said the parts are hard to get, 'cause it's an older one. So we have an estimate for $8,347, and when I, when I was doing the transfer, I had it all looked together, so made sure I transferred enough to pay for all of it. We can do it all ourselves, but I just wanted to get the approval to do it.
So you have a backup generator for when you lose power or whatever?
Mm-hmm. And this one will, will be programmed where they'll do once a week, they'll do a test, and then when the power goes out, I think it's a short time that it kicks on, it's a gin rack. That's when it gives approval to do that.
Natural, oh, natural gas?
Yes. And all that, the pad sits on, the wiring to the switch, the natural gas, that's all included in the, in the quote. I have a copy, if you guys see if you want to see it. Look, you guys can... Both, both quotes are in here.
Now, is that turning in the old generator, or?
No, that was, I mean, I can, I can ask them about that, and we didn't think about, I didn't know if they take trade-ins or not.
Okay, what was the last thing you said about it?
I didn't know if they take trade-ins.
Yeah, I didn't know if they take trade-ins or not. We didn't ask about it.
Okay, well, one thing we need to make sure of is if we hold that generator back because it's county property.
Yeah.
So that it's, if we decide that at a certain future time, it's needed someplace else we can use it, or we can put it in the auction.
Okay.
What if they take trade-in and catch your calls? You want them to do that?
Would they what?
If they take the trade-in, you want them to trade it in? Take mine off the call?
Well, I, we're not gonna get anything out of an auction, so, I mean, if you, if they will take it, that'd be fine.
Okay.
There's value to it that way, and then you don't have to store it.
Right.
Now, I've noticed on here it's a 200 amp, is that enough to run what you need to run?
Yeah, and then we're in, for in the entire place, they'll run most of it. I mean, he said we wouldn't be able to run two or three welders once, but we don't have to do that anymore, so.
We probably have portable welders, yeah, right?
Pardon me, have portable welders? Yeah, we have one, I think we have one.
Okay. I thought you had a lot.
Yeah, so it, it, yeah, we don't have to run more than one welder at a time in there anyway, so. But he said it'd run pretty much everything, offices and stuff, so.
I'm gonna make a motion to approve both.
Allow both things, yeah.
He says he's got a little thing in his budget, and the possibility of getting some of it taken off with the trade-in, may not be much, but it is something. We don't want it to burn down, and we have to build a new County Highway drive.
And, and if, if they want to use a trade-in, we'll store it somewhere, and if anybody else needs one, we'll go and get it.
I mean, it'd be nice to use it other places, but like you said, you can't get parts for it anymore, so we're just gonna find for nothing.
And he says it was hard to get parts for, for that model.
It's probably, maybe there's hopes it's been built.
Um, I think they said it came from here, just where they got the, the current one they're using.
Oh, out here on that thing?
Yeah, so...
Exactly.
It's, it's a decent sized one. I think it might have been too small was one of, one of the reasons they got rid of it, I think. It's too small for here.
I'll second.
You'll second?
Yes.
Okay, so I have a, correctly put wrong, gentlemen, I have a motion and a second to approve repairs that you were talking about, and the purchase of a new generator. Is that right? Okay, all right. So then I would call for vote. All in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Passed.
And the other, the other thing we got is that we encumbered some money, I guess, for trucks and equipment.
What's that?
We, I guess we encumbered some money at the end of the year last year for trucks and equipment, and at least that's what I was told. But we had the money in there for like $720,000, we got a loader on its way, and two trucks were supposed to be ordered, and was never ordered. Of course, let me rephrase that. They were ordered, but it was never sent in, 'cause we're not building those trucks right now. Could be a couple of years. I'm just gonna see if we can get that money, if we can take it and buy some, we've got a link on a, a new used, it's a 2019, single axle, it's stainless steel bed, it's supposed to be ready to go, from Logan Sport Wears. And we're gonna see if we can get that, and maybe if we can find a, a new used tandem, maybe get that. Should have enough money in there to do both.
Now, does this money already been dedicated to the trucks that were ordered?
It's, it's in the, the, there's three equipment budgets in the...
Right.
All that money's in all three of those.
Right, well, what I'm asking is, did they dedicate that money already to purchase these trucks? It's already a signed deal, or are we just waiting on delivery?
Pretty much. It's the way, it's the way that I was, under the assumption...
So you didn't have any, which is right? Other roof equipment and roof maintenance system? Purchase of a truck finally? Shepherd and Apple Truck Center?
Yeah.
Jefferson City?
Now, you say they never were really ordered though, or?
We ordered them to, to the company, but the order was never turned in, 'cause they're not making them at the present time. So it'll be, he said before, before we get anything, or, the order, it'd probably be 2025 before we get, and I know we encumbered over here and encumbered again, so we need to use that this year if we can.
You can't do a big switch.
You can, you can switch horses, and you can, because of, of an elegant, the covers were needed, so.
Right, but it has to be a complete, other than.
So we need to give him permission, but we support him. I do, yeah.
That's, that, that's, that's another, another deal that we've got in the video scene. Our plan is with the traverse, we work off the man's, face that we could trade it for pickup truck for once, because I think that'd be more useful for us.
Yeah, why would we buy a traverse? All it is is just a personal car for somebody to drive back and forth for.
Pretty much, that's the way we looked at it, we, we figured a pickup truck would actually service better. It might cost a little more than what that is, the traverse, but, um, we'd have to order one. We got, there's, we got one on the lot over there at Mann's, the red one, one ton. I was kind of looking at, but it's a, it's a quad cab and I, I was wanting a regular cab, but.
Well, well, regular cabs are, are all right, but sometimes when you need to haul more than one, it takes less vehicles to go there.
And the reason we thought that was, we, they were two, a one ton and a one ton and a half, this extra cab. We didn't wanna do two or more.
Sometimes it's cheaper to haul a quad than a single, so we can run five or six.
Well, that one, I checked on the price on that one, that's gonna be about two thousand dollars more than the traverse.
The usual numbers?
Twenty eighteen.
I've seen that one, they were almost fifty thousand for that.
Well, the tag in the, um, on the mirror, it said thirty-nine.
Thirty-nine?
And they said this traverse will be thirty-seven or thirty-eight.
Have we got the traverse?
No, haven't got it yet. But the first store has been signed, so we're gonna buy something.
How many miles on it?
Ninety, ninety thousand. Yeah, it's a two thousand eighteen, it's, uh, the, you've got Duramax of these one.
A lot of miles.
For ninety thousand.
Something a little bit rough, maybe, probably like here, Harry.
Let's take the first thing we're working on first, and that's the encumbrance here.
They've had two encumbrances, two different sets of encumbrances that were approved. That they were approved for the invoices attached. So if he wants to change that, he's gonna have to go to the council.
Okay. So we need to, okay, then we go to the council and ask permission to change it, or has it found better deals or whatever? I'll make that motion here first, got to go to council to change the encumbrance purchase.
Or the other way is if they decide not to. I'm not sure the legal way to do this, if they, if they can change the, the invoices. And if they can, then there's always leave it alone and then the additional. Because the money is still in twenty twenty-two and all that, have to give us the additional they might have to change.
Ms. Hall, agree with your report? Changing what's been equipped as pro.
I don't know, I, I've never had this happen, so. I'd have to check on them, legal procedures.
Well, yes, God, we've never done it before.
This was all done before I got in there. I'm just trying to figure out a way to, you know, we get, get vehicles and.
Right.
Here's this, this, this money's already in there, and this is why I was up there.
We have to build along with what this is, so we can talk about that.
I mean, I was wanting to get the first step, ministers, and then the next step we can do is the council, I figured out how to do the first.
They really don't have anything to do with the finance department.
That's fine, I just wanted to get the ball rolling.
Yeah, got it.
Um, as far as the.
Wait, wait, hold it. Did you second that one?
No, I don't, okay, I will second.
You will second, okay. Repeat the motion, motion of the last guy to go from council to change the encumbrance request for different equipment that can be developed. Still a second, and then I call for a vote on that motion, all in favor of it, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, now that passed, now, you wanted to change the traverse to a.
I was, I was actually gonna wait, because I wanted to find out if that's what we want, or, or before, uh, that way we can have something saying we want to trade it for this, type thing.
So you could bring that back to us in two weeks?
Yep. We'll all work on that in the next two weeks and then we can.
Sounds good. What was it?
So what are you bringing back? I don't understand.
There was a traverse that was purchased, ordered.
Right, it's in here with these encumbrances.
But when it comes in, um, we thought we could use a pickup truck better, because I think it was pretty much for, for the superintendent. But there's a pickup truck down there, and it's a, it's a two thousand eighteen Chevy one ton. And we was trying to figure out whether we want that, or we have to order one, a bit of truck we want. But I was gonna figure that out and then bring that back, once I figure out. I was just kind of wanting to come up and say, I trade that for this, type thing, instead of.
You know, you might both get a easy swap with them if you just ordered a work truck, the way you wanted it.
Well, we thought about ordering just a regular cab, long man, and, yeah.
I think you should have two, they're good.
Now that, I don't know, I'd have to ask them. Tony's supposed to get with me today or tomorrow, I was gonna ask him stuff, questions like that.
I guess what I'm gonna say is don't make any promises, because you have to get the council to approve, having it for something different.
Right. Right, now, now, I just, I'll make sure they do, I have to go in front of the council first, but.
Anything else from the board?
I think that's it.
Seventy-five extension? You have it on here?
That's why you gave, you brought this one in first. I mean, yeah, you had it on the other gym, but this one came in.
I did?
Yeah.
Sorry.
So that's why I had it on.
I didn't need to, no, it, it hadn't changed since we talked about it two weeks ago.
Okay, got it.
I'll get that figured out.
It's all right.
Is the office doing all right?
Yep, ever, um, office there did a pretty good job and.
I ran into her over the weekend after COVID, and she said she loves it and she's really enjoying it.
Yeah, she, she catches on that computer stuff quick.
It's a good deal, because I, you, you got very good individuals to, to be in there.
Yeah, well, thank you. And that's all I have. I'll take it.
Thank you. Oh, and seventy-five extension, I did give it to Camden to me.
Yeah.
And they knew more about it than I did, so I guess can, can invite.
He went out, talked.
Yeah, so they're all, they're all on board with this, so.
They are.
Yeah.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that we weren't running ahead of them.
Right, that's what I was there for, the Logan Sport.
Thanks, Scott. Thank you.
Appreciate you going to that. Okay, we're ready for Sheriff Tony Wiggott. Good morning, Sheriff.
Good morning. So it would have been a, a good segue when he was talking about things burning down, we don't want that.
No.
So that fire inspection, uh, that I had until the thirteenth of February, get back in order. Brad, the nine one director and I got together and, and we got everything, pa- we passed. We got came back and we passed, yeah. And that's mostly because we're busting at the seams and don't have things, can't put things places, so that's why a lot of these things were happening. Uh, the second part of line here is, uh, as you know, we've had, we're short, not currently, we've been short for deputies, which is a quarter of our entire department. I did some, I did some figuring for, for us to, to hire a brand new guy, we've hired two that'll have to do the police captain. They're gonna do wonderful, they're gonna be great officers, I mean. But it costs approximately, including their salary for the time they're at the academy, it costs us roughly twenty thousand dollars. But aside from their training, we're not getting that protection from them at that time. Well, we have a really unique opportunity as a person that just left our department six months ago. Uh, he didn't leave to go to another police department, uh, he left, he actually kind of followed in his dad and brother's footsteps and went to a place where they worked. And, uh, he did it to take care of his family, to better, better himself and make life easier. He wants to come back. And his only request was that he be allowed to come back where he was, his years of service, his vacation, when he left here in August. And I believe that's contrary to what the policy says. And I believe I need to come to you guys to see if I can get that approved. And happy to answer any questions.
Pete's talking to me about this on the phone a couple of weeks ago, and the individual wants to come back. I'm a hundred percent for it, even though it might, we have to change the policy on that. This individual, when he was here, gave a hundred and ten percent every time he was on the job. I was sad to see him leave, but I understand why he did it, but I think he's got some stuff to figure out with his family. And, um, he rose, this is working in Ford County, he can protect his associates.
He was, he was born to be a police officer, and why this is a rare opportunity in, in today's age. Most law enforcement officers are rare, you, you don't get many applications, so for him to want, A, he wants to come back here. So this is not a guy that we add water, this is a guy we can give him the keys and, and he is right back where he is from when he left. So it's almost like he hasn't been gone for six months, we would, we would make sure that he's all prepared for that. But it, it's gonna take a week or so versus a, a brand new person nine months to a year before we truly get any kind of service out of them, other than writing and training. Or being at the academy for four months.
And this will bring you back up to most of the four, right?
Uh, we will still be one short. So again, there's two openings now, and let's pretend if we have to hire two more brand new guys. So you're looking at another forty thousand dollars, they're gonna have to go to the academy. Or we can get one that's ready to go.
Twenty thousand dollars, basically?
Yeah. And that's including salaries, the, the meals we have to pay for while they're there, the cost of the academy for that sixteen weeks.
This thing will probably be a lot better, and make way more, because he's just that qualified. He's had a lot of certifications, I'm starting his thing to go.
Top, yeah, top of the line.
Does he live in county?
Yes, sir.
What's your question, Alan?
Well, as far as is anybody serving those positions, uh, things have changed from what they were for you. Given that a special course they can have, and you can run away and go somewhere else, or somebody else to do it. But we need to keep the force as strong as we can, to do that.
I would like for him, I would like for him to sign with us that he won't go anywhere for two years. I think that would.
I, I've talked to him about that, he's on board.
I mean, that way it's a guarantee, he's, he's still here with us, but I think he's gonna retire from the force. I really do.
Yeah, I think, I think in the long run, he made a mistake, he knows he made a mistake, but it was for the right reasons. It was about bettering himself and his family.
All right, you don't know until you step out and see what you got.
Absolutely, and he feels like an idiot.
You don't, you don't make mistakes.
Absolutely.
You don't make mistakes, you don't do them. Well, I'm gonna make the motion, allow this individual to come back where he is at, as long as he signs a two-year contract, stay in the state.
I think that we have, we're all on the same page, I'm a hundred percent in favor of him coming back. The thing we have to do is accept, make an exception to the personnel policy for this, which Ted, we are able to do, aren't we?
Yes, and I think if the condition that you talked about makes that possible, if there is a, a binding agreement to continue service for a minimum of, like, one, four months.
One, four months, yeah.
I think it needs to say agreement to not contract.
Yeah. I didn't get that.
I didn't say contract.
Yeah, I think it needs to say agreement and not contract.
Right. Okay.